Begin, okay. Well, good evening, everyone. It's time to call to order our regular board meeting for the month of August. I appreciate everyone being here. Board members, you have before you a draft agenda for tonight's meeting. I would make one suggestion with the boards, for the boards' consideration. I'd like for Mr. Jones, if possible, we're going to present some certificates in a moment, but before we get into the normal board minutes approval and the disbursements and whatnot, I'd like, if possible, if it's okay with the board, for Mr. Jones to give us an update on our personnel situation, and then we'll move on with the business of the evening. So, if you're okay with that, then...
Make a motion to do so?
Okay, great. Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Super. If everyone will stand, please, with pleasure. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I think Eric and I both are going to slip out this way. You recall, board members recall that we love nominating folks for awards, and we, especially when we have such fantastic candidates. We nominated Ms. Brayla Hockett for the TSBA Student Recognition Award this year, and we'd like to present her a certificate. Would you come and see? She's a great representative of our school system. If you want to kind of allow us to symbolically present that to you.
Hey, guys, all right? We go on three, one, two, and three. Do one more. All right? One, two, and three. Perfect, thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you. Another one of the Tennessee School Boards Association's awards each year is Volunteer of the Year, and we couldn't decide which one of this couple we wanted to nominate. So, and the truth is, for all they do for the school system, they're inseparable. They are the spirit of, really, the tiger family. And so, Tim and Sonya Ellis, we were so proud to nominate them. If you will join us, we would love to get a photo with you. Thank you for all you do for our school system and our students.
Do I have to turn around?
No. Okay, here we go on three, one, two, and three. Let me do one more. All right, on three, one, two, and three.
Awesome.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're so blessed with volunteers and students and staff that do so much to make our system what it is. Thank you. And again, there's going to be a lot of exciting approval of things tonight, but if you have other places you need to be and other commitments, we understand if you need to slip out. So, just let your schedule be the guide. But thank you again for all you do. And Mr. Jones, as we mentioned earlier, can you give us an update on...
Sure. I'll go through. We have a statement that we've prepared and disseminated throughout the school system. Fayetteville City Schools is aware that an accusation has been made online concerning an educator at Fayetteville High School. We take such matters very seriously. The staff member in question has been placed on administrative leave pending the conclusion of the investigation. Students, families, and the community members can be assured that the safety and well-being of our students is of paramount importance. I and the administrators are following the policies and procedures of the Fayetteville City School System to ensure that we obtain a complete understanding of any situation and the totality of this situation, and that any subsequent determinations will be made in accordance with the laws of the state of Tennessee.
Okay. Thank you very much. We don't bring, we don't bring all personnel matters to the board because that's the role that you and our staff play, but it's, in this case, seems appropriate to...
Yes, sir. Happy to provide that information.
Great.
We will work diligently on the situation. Make sure those are correct conclusions.
Thank you. We have some drawings we're circulating to the other board members to take a look at tonight. That's some of the facility improvement drawings that we've spoken about. That's the latest draft for you all to see. Board members, you had an email from Ms. Williams on the 31st, the minutes from the July 9th regular board meeting. I hope you've had a chance to review those. If not, take a moment. Otherwise, before we open for a motion, that we approve those minutes?
Make a motion to approve July 9th minutes?
All right, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thanks. We also, in today's email, got the disbursements for the month of July. If you want to, if you haven't looked those over, this would be a great time to do so. I saw that American Strippers, that's, I know they do parking lots and whatnot. Is that some of the stuff I saw? Was it the high school?
Yes, sir. We've installed our, had applied a few fire lanes because a lot of times when we have events, people are parking in places that really should be fire lanes. So, we've tried to make sure that's accounted for. Also, we've put in some parking for the SROs so that they can enter and exit more efficiently in case of an emergency.
Excellent.
Yeah, and it's, it's great. They did a really good job with it.
Is that the Grand Caravan exit? Will that be reimbursed back as insurance, or is that just kind of...
Yeah, we're running that through, and I believe that, yes, that will be reimbursed for any insurance.
Okay. Got a motion to approve the disbursements for July?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Super. All right, so the individuals of the hour. Tomorrow morning is coming, and it's an exciting morning.
Yes, so we, yes. We are excited about tomorrow. Our doors open at seven. We're excited to see all of our tigers come back. This past Thursday, we had our open house, and we saw a bunch of parents and students that night. We had a pretty big turnout. And one thing I would like to report that I'm pretty happy about is our kindergarten. We've added a sixth unit due to our numbers going over 100 right now, so we're going to have a lot of little tigers starting this week. Of course, kindergarten pre-K will phase in throughout this week and then start full-time the following week. I would like to show you guys one of the things that we have got going at Askens. We've got our little T-shirts. It's a great day to be a tiger. If you would like one, just reach out to me, and I'll make sure you get one. But that's all I have for tonight.
Super. That's why, for the sake of, for the sake of actually all schools, one of our traditions, one of the traditions of the board has been to greet students and families as they arrive for the morning.
Yes, yes.
And we would ordinarily do that in the morning, but I think the board has decided that we're going to do, we're going to show up on Wednesday morning.
Perfect.
If that's okay.
Sounds great.
We don't ever want to be interfering with normal operations, but it tends to be a pretty well-received by the families and students, and, and the board loves it. Absolutely. It's a great interaction with, with folks.
Absolutely.
So, that'll be, if you have people on your doorstep early Wednesday morning that you don't normally have, you'll know what's going on. Just, we'll, we'll just do some meet and greeting and, and then move along, so.
Sounds good.
Great. It's one of our little celebrations of the start of the school year. Dr. West, so glad to have you given our report tonight and on staff.
I'm glad to be here. My 33rd day today. So, I want to report that we're fully staffed. We are waiting on our custodian, who's doing this two-week notice at another company to get on board. But Lee Allen, give a shout to him. He's our custodian there. He does a phenomenal job. Building looks amazing. If you guys rode there last week, or actually this week, but you can see the floors look great. He did all that by himself. We did have open house on the 30th, had over 100 kids, so really successful open house. Looking forward to seeing those kids tomorrow. Fall sports in full swing. Tonight, our volleyball team is taking on Highland Rim at 5:00 at home. If you want to come see that. We also have games tomorrow night, volleyball, and Thursday night. Thursday night, football game versus Westwood at home. So, full swing. Full swing. Fall pictures this week, sports pictures this week. So, we're also excited to offer career tech classes this year to our eighth graders that will go up to the high school. Thank you to Spencer and Regina. They'll be offering health science, criminal justice theater, cosmetology, and they will earn a credit for that course. So, that's, that's awesome. Our seventh grade students will also get career exploration, and our sixth grade students will get computer science. So, we're excited about that. I'm excited to be here, excited to see the students tomorrow, and it's going to be a great year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. West.
Questions? I do have one question. Sports schedules are always a question because this is an active board that likes to show up. We like to show up and support the Tigers. Are those gen, what's the best venue to find those? Is it the website?
Those will be on our website this week.
Okay.
We'll have volleyball, we'll have football, and we will have soccer. Soccer starts, girl soccer starts next week. So, you can expect those with rosters on the website this week.
We'll check the website.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Perrin, welcome back.
Good evening. I, I don't have much either. I really want to thank my office staff, Ms. Holly, Ms. Betsy, Ms. Monty, Ms. Susan, and Ms. Casey for helping get us prepared. We feel as prepared as we can be for the new school year, and we've all, we've, we've worked really hard to get ourselves there, but we are ready for tomorrow. I just wanted to report that this year, we'll have 15 students that will be enrolled in TCAT, which that's almost double. We've had eight in years past. We'll have over 50 students that are dual-enrolled through MOPLO. And then, we have six students that are participating in the middle college program, so they will end up earning over 60 credit hours and graduate with their associates before graduating high school, which obviously, all of those things, that's, that's great.
How many students?
There are six currently.
Six?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
So, well, we're, we're excited to get things rolling.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Well done. I had a comment from a longtime teacher, many years of experience, has taught in multiple school systems, who told me that she had never had this few schedule adjustments to make with her students ever in her career, and it's because of the work your staff is doing there in the office to make sure that everything works the first time. So, all those efforts are noticed.
Yes, sir.
By the folks that that affects, and it affects every student, right?
It does.
By definition, so, so well done. Phil Banks, fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any members of the public request to speak to the board tonight? No, certainly no reports. All right, we'll move it along here then. Supervisors' reports. Ms. Dodson, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Or would you like to go last?
Sure.
There's no, there's no board listed, so I don't know.
Super excited. Just want to reiterate, appreciate, they're doing a great job at the high school. We've got students still in our own TCAT. We've got six students just enrolled in the welding program. They're doing a phenomenal job. Love the middle college concept. That's going to be very impactful. Also, the Phase Two of the CSM, so don't want to invite you to come to the middle school yet, but let us get about October or so, when we get all of our stuff in place. Think you're going to see some really exciting stuff with the middle school program. So, that's going to be, that's going to be the Phase Two, and I think it's going to be tremendously impactful to students, so. Do you guys have any questions for me? Excellent.
Thank you.
It's a great day to be a tiger.
It is. Day for day is. Ms. Jean?
Two.
Nothing, okay. Mr. Giff?
Real quick. Want to let you know, over the summer, we've been working hard. The technology department has. All teachers now have laptops and a new monitor in their classrooms, and they're wireless so they can move their desks around now finally and do things like that. And we're very excited about that. It's going to cut down on the amount of maintenance that we have to do to maintain all those desktops that we've had. We've gotten rid of those, so it's going to be a cost savings on top of that. So, real excited about that. Zach and I were able to install an audio enhancement system in the cosmetology room at the high school. Last year, we got it in late in the year, and there are like six speakers, I think, we put up and got it all tied in, and it all works, which is really cool. So, we were, we were excited about that. And we've got another one we're going to be installing at Ralph Askens. The room that Cindy Young was in was an RTI data room, and now it's a classroom, which is a great thing. We need more space, so we're adding a, a unit in there. And then, lastly, at the middle school, we're adding a vigilante door swipe at the middle school back door because the kids are all going to be going to the high school back and forth. So, the teacher will be able to go by and swipe that door without having to fight getting in and out of the building. So, we're excited about that. The teachers can use that. Real safety feature there, so, anyway. But that's it. Been doing a lot, a lot of scheduling, helping schools out, and I think we're in good shape and ready to go, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir? Any questions?
Questions?
All right. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Great report. Mr. McCormick?
Don't really have much. Just want to thank everybody for their help last week. It's always an exciting time and busy time, the weekend service, and we appreciate all the staff and, and them being with us and getting what they need to get done. And again, thank you guys for helping serve everybody. As far as I know, everybody got plenty to eat. I didn't, I didn't hear any...
Hamburgers were great.
And so...
Adam gets credit.
Mr. Jones was there. That's a lot of years of singeing hair, if you get to that point. But we do. We appreciate everybody's help, and like I said, it's always an exciting time of year, and we look forward to a new school year, and just appreciate everybody, you know, chipping in, doing what needed to be done. Central office staff, that's what makes it great about this system, is we just all kind of pull together and make it happen. So, again, thank y'all. Thank y'all for y'all's help, and we appreciate all that you do.
All right. From our CFO, Ms. Williams.
So, the July financial reports were emailed earlier today, and I'm just going to tell you any questions that you might have.
And this is just data for our review and information?
Just for review, yes.
Thank you. All right. Committee reports. Facilities and transportation. As I mentioned earlier, we were floating around some architectural sketches of Ralph Askens' entryway that we want to add, and I think they're getting very close to what, what we want to see there. Anything else from facilities and transportation?
Yes, sir. I do, I would like input from the board members, if everybody's agreeable with that general scheme and the idea that we'll make modifications to the interests of Ralph Askens in accordance with those drawings. I can go ahead and enter into a contract with the company who can then draw up formal drawings, and then I believe the anticipated timeline would be, we'll give them the rest of the year to Christmas to get really good drawings taken care of, maybe go to bid right at the first of the year, which is usually a good strategic time to go to bids for various reasons. You get better, a better situation, more made for your budget if we do that. And then, with the construction and, the construction starting at the beginning of next summer, I hope, should be completed by the end of the summer. But again, just let me know what your thoughts are, and then I'll proceed accordingly. I have, let's see, I've also got, I'll go ahead and tell y'all because it is facilities and transportation. I've had communication with FEMA, and it gives me pause.
I get excited.
If you're wondering why, I might just like dive in, and I'm always hesitant before I say. I've had conversations with them. Two conversations with them. One was a very productive conversation in which I was informed that we are more likely than not to get some type of an answer that'll give us avenues for advancement in some way by Halloween, which is not, you know, I'd love for it to be next week, but by Halloween, we should have something. That's some type of progress, and I'm going to, I've also got people that I can contact at that time, if, if I'm not hearing things fluidly, to try to motivate. There's a, it's a very complicated situation between FEMA and FEMA that I'd best not to go into in an open meeting, but at the same time, they are working through their avenues, and they've hired quite a few new people. So, I'm encouraged that we do have a timeline to hear something, which is not something we've had in a while. The last information we were given was over a year ago, and that wound up not to be accurate information. We haven't really heard anything, so that is encouraging. I'm pleased with that. I also had a new team employee contact me to ask if they can utilize some of our, some of the work that Coach Keys and I put in a few years ago when we did the initial grant and, because it's, it's evidently a very good grant that we wrote, and they're trying to, they were asking if we would allow them to use that as a template for some other people who are trying to do similar projects. I told them, yes, we want to be a good neighbor. We want all the communities in Tennessee to have access to it, but I will, you know, we'll grant permission because it saves people quite a lot of money. Coach Keys and I do that during, during a break, just, you know, because we wanted to help the kids. That's one thing, but if you pay someone to do that, it's, it's quite a lot of money. So, we do want to extend that opportunity for them, but I also issued the caveat that I, I don't want anyone to have the ability to do that, kind of copy our homework and then get on the list and have a, jump to the head of the line. That would upset me. And she said, she said she understood that, and that she would try to do her best to make sure that didn't happen, and then she kind of explained the situation. That's not likely to be able to happen at all. But I was encouraged that, you know, we're, you know, we're doing something, and at the same time, our work can, can serve as a template to help other people and help other communities in our state. So, lots of good conversations with them. I think things are sincerely starting to move slowly, so that's good.
You suggest the Halloween timeframe to get back with her on that?
No, no.
Just curious. I will get you an answer by then.
Yeah. Next Halloween. No, I just always wanted to try to be helpful.
That's right.
The portables, they are deconstructing those pieces at a time. If you notice, they've, they're hand demolishing the decks and certain other elements to get it out because requirements are that the pieces have to be sorted as, as it's taken to the dump. You can't just leave it. It needs to be sorted out. So, that work is ongoing. It'll take longer than we anticipated, but it is ongoing and progress as we have made. Everything else that we've talked about recently in the past is in process with no, nothing worth wanting to report on that's different from the last reports.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Super. Thanks for that. Some good news in there. Finance committee had three budget amendments for tonight. The first one is FY '24 capital line item amendment number two, and this is, again, we're just moving, there's no new revenue, no new expense. We're just moving, as we close out the budget year, we're just moving among some lines in the budget. So, I would make a motion that we approve that amendment.
Okay.
I got a second. Any questions about amendment number two? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. We also have FY '24 general purpose budget line item amendment number seven, and this is just some very minor adjustments that, as you see on the, on the explanation that was emailed out. It has to do with finalizing the FY '24 parent parental leave money that the state provided, and it's really, they, we got final guidance on where that, how that needs to be categorized within our budget, and so we've made those changes as the state has dictated. Dictated is a strong word.
As they have recommended.
That's right, yeah. It's just, they told us, they gave us an answer on how to categorize it. So, yes, much better word. So, I would make a motion that we approve line item amendment number seven to the general purpose FY '24 budget.
Thank you.
And I have a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. And then, we also have FY '24 general purpose budget amendment number six, and this one will have to go to the city for approval, but, but once again, it's the end of year, end of the FY grant money adjustments related to the ISM grant, and really, we're reallocating the funds to the proper codes within the budget. So, that's, that's all it is, and no new revenue, no new expenditures, just really ensuring that the budget closes out properly for FY '24. So, I'd make a motion, we approve that amendment.
Thank you.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Thank you. And we do have a little bit of business under insurance and policy tonight.
I have one policy tonight. I move we approve policy 4.214, excuse me. I approve, I move we approve policy 4.214, use of art, artificial intelligence programs on second reading.
Got a motion to approve that policy? That was emailed out as well?
A second.
And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Super. Is that all from insurance and policy tonight?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Superintendent's report. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. I have our approval of disciplinary hearing authority, and I have the list of our staff members who will be serving on the DHA. It is provided to you in your packet. We've got some outstanding people who are going to help us out with that. Hopefully, we won't have a lot of call to have to bring them into play, but if we do, we've got great people that we can count on to make good sound judgment in that regard. So, if you all would consider approving that.
Make a motion to approve. You have a chance.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right. Thank you.
Now, another thing I'd like to say is I'm excited about the start of the new school year. It's always, it's a lot of fun when the kids come in the building and, you know, it's the hot weather, and then you go into fall, and you're going into ballgames, and I, right after the meeting, I'll go to a ballgame. My daughter's involved in it. It's, 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 makes everything nice, and we get into the groove, and we've got a lot of wonderful things to look forward to. Looking forward to a great year, working with a lot of good people and serving the best kids in the world, so looking forward to it.
Right. Thanks. A couple of matters for the board in my, in my report, as we're all aware, we do an annual performance. We're required to do an annual performance evaluation for our director of schools. We've actually done this for years before it was even required by the state. We were doing that, and so, in any event, emailed out to you last Friday was the instrument that we used this past year. That's been proposed as our, it's been updated with dates and whatnot, but the, the, in essence, it's, it remains the same. We're obviously open to making any changes the board sees fit, but, but I would propose that evaluation instrument to be used for the '24, '25 school year.
Second.
Yeah, second, thank you. Any questions or comments about that? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Super. Thanks. Then that's a, now you know the rubric, right?
Yes, sir. I know what you're expecting, so I appreciate it.
And we always will take a look ahead at the next month to the calendars. The first Monday in September turns out to be Labor Day. I trust that the board would like to not make on Labor Day, so why don't, could we bump that to the next Monday, September 9th at 5:00 p.m.? Bless you. Does that reason? Bless you.
Have we been to Fall Labor Church? Has that happened? Do we sign up for that?
I'm sorry?
In November?
It's in, no.
No, it was in September.
You mean the Fall District meeting?
Yes, Fall District meeting.
Okay.
Do we sign?
I believe we're signed, registered for Fall District meeting, aren't we? We'll talk about, we'll, we'll circle back on that.
Yes. I feel like it's that week.
Where?
It's in Harriet or Lewis. It's a, it's a west county.
Yeah, we hosted last year, but I don't know.
It's like Harriet.
I don't have that on my calendar.
Okay.
Harriet is a lovely place.
But we're not going.
But it is a.
Long drive.
Long drive. Yes. Mr. Lomax is superintendent, a fine gentleman.